Well, we should just get, do you think we should just get started and I can jump in?
Yeah, we could approve the minutes of the last meeting. I'll make a motion to approve it. Or do you want to open the meeting officially?
Yes, I'll open the meeting to say, welcome to order, welcome to the Rules and Government Relations Meeting of March 22, 2021. The meeting is being held remotely per Governor Baker's Order from last year on remote participation, but it'll be up on Zoom and you can watch it on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. And everyone who's watching should be reminded to wear a mask and practice social distancing. So with that in mind, yeah, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes at the last meeting.
Okay, that's the minutes of March 4th. I'll second that. So motion a second, councillor Riss?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. So that's great.
Why don't we work on the city emails? Because Peg has the rule, she had started to work on the rule when we realized the meeting wasn't going to happen. So.
Right. Yeah.
Wait for her for that.
So, yeah, Karen, thanks so much for coming to this meeting. Just to sort of fill you in on where we are, if you're a city councillor or school committee member, you have an email, like a dedicated email address, and members of the community can go to the website, look it up, and email you very easily. But we have a bunch of boards and committees, like to use an example, the planning board, that make important decisions, and people might want to reach out to them, provide them with information, ask them questions, whatnot. And there's currently no way to do that. They don't get their own dedicated email addresses. We understand that there's a lot of these committees, so it would be generating just probably like well over 100 email addresses to give everyone a unique one. But we had suggested a couple things that might work as a model to sort of allow people, like there to be some way that a member of, oh, yeah, just throw me back up actually and say, you know, there's a general thought that members of these committees who are all volunteers don't want their personal email addresses going up there, which is understandable. So we've tried, we've thought about a couple things, including two of the ideas that we've had. One of them would be giving a dedicated city email to all the committee chairs, so that you could reach out to the committee chair and then, you know, it'd be their responsibility to circulate that to the other members. The other thought that we had, we checked out Greenfield's, or I checked out Greenfield's website, and they have, on their website, you can send an email to any committee and they'll just have an email address that's like planningboard@greenfield.gov or whatever it is. When you send an email to that, it then forwards that to the personal email addresses of all the committee members. So those email addresses themselves are sheltered. You know, they're not, they're kept private, but you're still able to reach out and say, hey, I'm not going to be able to make this meeting, but I wanted to let you know that I'm really concerned about blah, blah, blah. So those are sort of two ideas. And I think we were open to other ideas as well, but we do kind of feel like there needs to be something, like some way to make it easier for people to reach out to, you know, members of the commu-, or for members of the community to reach out to people that are on boards and committees. And, and of course, one of the big things is, is we want to be conscious of the costs. When we initially started having these discussions, the sense we got from Ashley was that doing this would be extremely expensive. And so we kind of just want to get a sense of, you know, when we initially reached out, our first thing was going to be to go to Ashley and ask, you know, what are our options here? And it just turned out that that was the week that Ashley resigned. So we've kind of been waiting for you to get on boarded so that we could ask you the same question, which is really like, what are our options here?
So, you know, he, yeah, Dan, you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna say, Tom, that I think the option we should explore is the Greenfield model. I think sending an email to a chair relies on one person to then distribute it to all the members of that committee. If there's, if Greenfield can do it, I don't see why we can't do it where you send an email to planningboard@easthamptonmass.gov and it automatically goes to the personal emails. So, in my opinion, that is a good model. And I guess, Karen, you can probably check with their IT up in Greenfield, how do they do it? And you may already know how to do it. And I'm just wondering, why does it cost a lot of money? That's a big question.
Yes. So first, I want to share the screen. If you allow me to share the screen, so I can show you now, what do we have? Because that's part of what I have been doing, learning what do we have in place to start here. Very good. Tell me if you can see this screen. Here's active directory. That is where we keep all of our users and permissions. And there is a group called city councillors that have these users already. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 emails. And then there is a distribution list that goes to all of them. So we go in here and we see who are the, the members. It's the same members. Everything gets distributed among them. So I just wanted to show you what, what we had. So that's the model in place. And I don't know, those are the committee chairs and why some, some councillors have emails and why others don't. It's true. Ashley was right about the cost. It's about $12 to $15 a month to have an email, which, you know, which adds up. So I guess if this is important for the city, the mayor will say, go move forward, we need to do it, we need to pay for it. But if we can find a way to save costs, then we should also explore that.
So just one or two quick things. The first is, all the councillors do have emails. There's nine of us on the city council, we're elected, we all have emails. But when you talk about, there's also a number of boards and committees in the city that are made up of volunteer members of the community. Like, the planning board is not elected, the, you know, the Board of Public Works, the Economic Development Industry Committee, these aren't elected bodies, these are just private citizens who volunteer some of their time to serve on these bodies. And they're the ones that don't have emails, just, just because you had said that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. For me, it's kind of understanding what we have. Okay, yes. So like, Dan, your suggestion is we should create for each committee, a general email on how many committees are there?
Well, I was gonna say that what we should do, I think, is target the most important committees at the beginning. But if there was 30 committees, and it's $12 an email per month, that adds up to $4,320 a year for 30 committees. That's not a lot of money when it comes to being able to improve communication for our citizens. And this is a big improvement. They can be told, look, and if you have an issue with the planning board, what they do now, they probably send it because there's another avenue that's through the planning department. They send an email to Jeff Bag and he gets it out there. But there are committees that don't have that internal administration in the city that makes getting that email, maybe that email you're sending will be read.
And even if there is, like, a private citizen might not know.
Right.
Contact.
We put it on the website, if you wish to contact the members of the planning board, here's the planning board's email address, planningboard@easthamptonmass.gov. And then in your system, it's distributed to current members. And they're told, if you respond, I guess I have to know, how does it get back to the person? So if an individual member responds, it must follow a path back to them, you know, because again, we don't want that private email public.
Right.
But that doesn't seem like a lot of money, Tom. Forty, thirty committees. I don't know how many committees we have. There's probably a lot, but 30 sounds like a pretty good number. And it certainly will get the bigger ones, like the assessors, DPW, zoning board of appeals, planning board. I can think of another, like the historic commission, housing, the housing fair partnership committee. There's a bunch of committees that are really active, shall I say, that we target. But I don't, I don't think it's a lot of money.
No, I think 30, you know, we're talking 30, 100, 150. So 150, I think, is the amount of all employees, officers included, for the city. So that would be, oh my God, that would be kind of bringing the budget for messaging to the same level. But 30 is manageable, I think is within, just, you know, the goals of the current administration. That's what I was hired for, to make governance more transparent, to use technology, to get, to get communication going and to make things easier to, to have access to. So I think this is going to get the approval. Absolutely. This, this is, this is why emails should be here.
And don't use the number 30. We should, Tom, you and I should look at all the committees and decide which one, if there's more than 30.
You're brilliant. I just counted them. There's 31.
Well, I've been around a long time, so I had that figure in my head. The other thing, though, to ask you, just for clarity, the committee has 10 members. The main email is planningboard@, but there's 10 members. Do we have to pay for every 10 of those 10 members to have a link to their email?
So this is what's happening. We, so now we are using Microsoft Outlook.
Yeah, I know. The mayor told me you want to go to Google. I love it.
Yes. Because in Microsoft, we are stuck into having to create, you can create distributions within accounts in Microsoft. Google is a little bit more flexible. If you have a group, you, you yourself can send emails, forward them to different places. So we're hoping that if we get the money and we can move forward, this is going to take maybe two months, three months to change environments. So for now, what we will have to do is, and I can work with the, with the chairs of each committee, help them create a personal lists, actually. You know, we will use their own email to send it internally to each other, to the members. Or is that something that you really want to avoid?
Well, I don't care for that. As long as their email isn't published. You get that?
Right, just to them, right among themselves. So the chair will forward that to them as a temporary patch until we can move into the new system. Responses will come again to the chair and it will be the chair responding.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The reason we have Microsoft is because Ashley hated Google. He thought Google had no security. Now, I don't know where your head is on that, but you should know about that. But I gotta ask, we're going to cloud-based software, correct? Getting out of physical servers in the building. I like that. It's a little safer in case the building burns down. But how about Google's security?
So that's an important question. Yes. So you're absolutely right. We have, not only that we have Microsoft, we have Microsoft on-premise. And we have an old machine that needs to be replaced. So we were attacked, two weeks ago, we had, we were attacked by this half-nude threat that is coming, actually, is coming from China, and they are targeting government institutions because they want to get records. So we, and only exchange on-premise. So we were attacked. It took, actually, I had to call Ashley and Ashley came and helped cleaning up. We needed to shoot everything down and rebuild. So it's not secure. It's not secure at all to have.
The Microsoft one isn't.
Yeah. It's not secure because we have it on-premise. And the security that we can provide is not the same as the cloud can provide that has all of these experts. But there are different packages, right? So the Google government is a special package that has been developed and is a little bit more expensive. That has something called the vault, which provides that extra layer of security. So for businesses that use this system, the price is around $18. And we are negotiating a contract that is going to be three years because we want it under $12.
$18 per email.
But we, you know, it's like, we don't want to go from what we say in Argentina, Guatemala, from Guatemalan. We don't, you know, we don't want to. So we want the security of government, but at a reasonable price. And the way they can do that is through a contract that for us is beneficial because now we know what are we paying this year, next year, and next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the same thing happened in higher education. There is a limit of, you usually go to three years in a contract. They allowed you to extend it for one more year, and then you have to get a new contract. So it's secure. Northampton is using it.
Well, I know the mayor told me she wants it. So can I ask you the other records the city has?
Hold on one second, Dan. I had a, just one.
I jumped in.
So Karen, could you reshare your screen for a second? You were showing the
Yes.
City Council list. I just want to confirm that I understand this correctly.
Yes.
So you have this list, this distribution group.
Yes.
Could you, if you created a new distribution group with no emails, just a distribution group, and then you populated it with people's personal emails, what would that cost?
So this is the problem with Microsoft, is now going to allow us. So all of these users in here have a Microsoft email, an Outlook email. So the distribution is within.
So that we wouldn't let me just have my Gmail account within the distribution group?
Right, exactly. So see, all the users in here, if you open the distribution, all of the members in here are at our, that's our domain.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, cool. I think I understand that.
I want to propose, Tom, that we don't push this onto Karen now. If they're gonna get a whole new cloud service, we can wait a couple of months, can't we? Why do all this work and then have to just start over?
Yeah, it sounds like if we're actually rebuilding like our whole email infrastructure anyway, like, maybe we should, like, I almost wonder if it wouldn't make sense, just for the purpose of keeping our agenda clear, to consider dismissing this without prejudice and then bringing it back once that setup has been done?
Or we could, or we can just keep it.
Or we could just extend it.
As it's done. But you have in your mind what we're trying to do. So when you develop the new program, let me ask you this. I think the mayor's gonna have this happen. This is gonna happen, right? Or is it still the data?
Well, funding is needed to move to, for the transition. So, because now we have the Microsoft licenses that go until August. So if we want to buy the Google licenses, it's going to be some overlap that we want. We don't, we need to have, you know, transition time in order to move all the records. So I think we need to have the approval and hopeful because there is money coming from the rescue and this makes sense. This is for our security, for our.
Well, I like the security aspect of it.
Yeah. So guys, I just see Owen has his hand raised, so I'm gonna just call on Owen right now.
Thank you, Chairman Peak. And Karen, hi, welcome to the city. I've been listening avidly to this conversation. This was an agenda item that I introduced. And I, for all the reasons that my colleagues listed, it's really important that we find a better way, a safer way, a more transparent way to be able to access committees in the city. I just wanted to put it out there to the two committee members in terms of how to negotiate this agenda item. If, if you're, if you've come up with a plan that you're ready to move forward with, you could always choose to pass it with certain stipulations, i.e. that it will not go into effect until the city has transitioned to the new server system, or something like that. But I just was listening in. I don't, I don't know if the item would be as cumbersome as, as you necessarily made it seem. So I just wanted to put that out there. But I do like the way that the conversation's going. And I agree that the simplest thing to do is just assign emails to, to chair people and create a distribution list from there. So I, you have my support there. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Well, let me say this. I think Owen's on to something. We are only making a recommendation to the mayor because the mayor has to fund this. And you're telling us there's no debate, you are going to switch to the Google Vault system for, you're fairly certain of that.
Yeah, well, that's my recommendation, right? And I hope that.
Oh, I have to tell you, I had dinner with the mayor. She's singing your praises. So don't worry about that.
Oh, God.
Anyway, I think we should, Tom, maybe come up with some language. I could do that for the next meeting, so that we could make a recommendation that the full council support the individual emails sent to each committee, so that citizens can access the committee. And then Karen can make sure that's distributed to the people who want their emails in there. Now, there may be committee members that don't want that information, even though it's supposedly private. But I hope not, because if they're willing to serve, you know, it's not like we're giving out their phone numbers and everything or their emails. So, I mean, if you can guarantee that somehow, if they ask that question, you know? But I think you could do something, Tom. I'd be willing to come up with some language.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Hey, I just want to cut in. I think Owen's raising his hand again. Councillor's there.
Is he?
Are you?
Sorry, I'm trying to be safe. I thought I lowered it. Oh, there it is. Is it lowered now?
Yeah. No, I think I went to lower it when you went to lower it, and so it got raised. Okay, cool.
All right, I apologize. But while I do have the floor, I think I do like this plan, because ultimately, this is basically a review and recommendation by the council. Because unlike, so city council, just, just really quickly, for Karen's sake, the reason city council has these emails is because it's an ordinance. But I think making an ordinance here would be a sticky situation. And I think ultimately, this was put forward for review and deliberation, and to make a recommendation to the mayor. And I think, again, you can, I agree with Dan, we could just craft language that, that, you know, stipulates how and when, and, you know, just leave it at that.
Right, because it's going to be a recommendation anyway. And there's no reason, like, in fact, it probably makes sense to do that prior to the thing, so that that recommendation is on the mayor's desk as she and Karen.
Well, she's probably developing a budget for IT right now.
Yeah.
My, can I ask you a question? Is the Microsoft contract already paid for? It's paid from August? So if we start the new fiscal year, July 1, with a new contract with Google, no problem. There'll be some overlap, but that gives you time to transition.
Yes.
I love it. I think we could make that recommendation to the mayor strongly, and I think she's on board with it.
Okay.
So one more thing that I would like to say, I, you know, in technology, we always like to pilot. And if you agree, Thomas, are you the chair? We can create one email now and use you as our guinea pig of say, overall, because the website is being redesigned. And now, yes, we have an email, but where do we position that in the website for everybody to find? And having one is going to give us that item that is, you know, is going to help us think what is the right place to, to locate it.
Well, underboards are committees, yeah, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm totally fine with that. But if you'd rather do it for somebody who actually is a member of one of those boards or committees, like not, that doesn't have an email address right now, like, I'm sure there's someone on the planning board or the EDIC that would happily be that guinea pig, because I already have a city email address.
I would, I would check with Jeff Bag, you know, Jeff?
Yes.
And ask him to ask the planning board if they can be the guinea pigs for this. The reason is, all elected officials, we already have published emails. We have an easthamptonmass.gov email. So if the planning board is willing to be the guinea pig for it, if you'd like to try it. And then on the website where it says planning board, email, planningboard@, we can test it. So it's really a matter of Jeff bringing it forward to Jesse Belcher, who is the, with the Belcher time as the chair, and maybe they can be your guinea pig.
Very good. So I can communicate directly with Jeff because we kind of live close in the basement of 50 Pason. Yes.
You're in the basement? I thought you were upstairs. They put you in the basement? Oh, my God.
They put me in the basement.
That's funny. I see councillor Zaret has his hand up.
Sorry, just really quickly too, I mean, I'm assuming that we'll think, that we'll think about this. So I just want to put it out there that we will have to have, you know, I don't know how often committee chairs change, but we're gonna have to have some sort of protocol for password changes and kind of a handing over, so to speak, of access to that email if, if a chair changes on the, on a committee. Just, just wanted to put that out there. I mean, that, that doesn't have to be, that could be an internal policy, but I just wanted to make sure that we think about that.
Let me have some clarification technical. What I'm hoping the citizens can do is email planningboard@easthamptonma.gov, and it automatically goes to all of the members. That the chair doesn't have to intervene to do that. Am I correct?
Yeah, that would be our goal.
That's the efficient way to do it.
Yes.
Because I, and then anybody that wants to respond, responds. And to catch, this is, you know Peg Coniff, I think you do, our president? She, just to catch her up, if we do this, then we're trying to make sure that the private emails are not made public, Peg. So we're gonna go from one main thing and then go right to everybody. And Karen is suggesting, so just to catch you up, they're gonna transfer to Google Cloud Service because it's more secure. They now have an in-house hardware Microsoft service, and that's gonna happen in the next couple of months.
Yep.
So we're not gonna implement this, but she wants to do maybe a pilot program, let's say, the planning board.
Yep.
And we're gonna, I'm gonna come up with some language to make a recommendation to the full council that we recommend to the mayor to implement this.
Okay.
That'll be something we'll vote on at our next rules meeting.
Okay.
That catches you all up, I think, Tom, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think that's great. I do see councillor Zaret's hand again.
Again, okay. Owen?
You're muted.
Sorry, I'm driving down Cottage Street and trying to be safe here. So the, just a technical, technical question. So inbound, inbound emails to a committee will protect the personal emails of the members of the committee because it will be sent to a distribution list and distributed to those members. If a member responds, is there any way to have some way of, almost like an outbound distribution list so that, because the second that one of those members of those committees responds to the email from a, from a resident or whomever, won't their, won't their personal email then be attached to the response?
Yes. Right. So we need to look at the permissions of respond as, who is going to have, yeah, because we want to use that planning board or whatever our committee it is. So, yeah, we need to set that up. And absolutely, I think that, that is the goal, right, to protect identity in both sides. So that's why I want to really pilot it and look at it and, and explore. The nice thing also with the Google is that if you have an email, you will have the history. Somebody's not the chair anymore, we changed the password, but the conversations that took place in the past will be there. And at the same time, there's going to be a drive, if you're familiar with Google Drive, where documents can be saved. And even if the members change, that is going to remain, which is going to be a good place to store data and documents.
Just to follow, follow up on Owen's question, an outbound email from the resident can be sent to the planningboard@easthamptonma.gov email and then out. So the resident is not reading that person's, I, I'm so-and-so on the planning board, but that person's email is not gonna be seen. but that person's email is not gonna be seen because the reply email is planningboard@, am I correct? The out, the reply. So you're protecting it in both directions. Is that true? We can do that?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
I thought you said that Outlook wouldn't let you do that. You'd have to wait.
Yeah, exactly. Outlook wouldn't let you do that. In order to respond, you need to have your own account um, to be part of that group.
So you're gonna wait till Gmail's up to do the, to do the pilot program. I get you. Okay. I misunderstood that.
No, no, but I also would like to start now because I want to make sure as we're redesigning the website, which is very important for the interface with the public, that we know there is going to be this kind of emails for committees and where do they fit? So, you know, so we remember about them because there are so many things in the website
True.
to think about.
Okay. Well, you, we have thirty-one committees. That was a good guess by me, so that's not too bad. Uh, by the way, she did mention that to get the really secure email, Peg, is eighteen dollars per email, which gets pretty hefty, but they're gonna try and negotiate a contract down to something like twelve with Google. Right now, paying twelve to fifteen for emails, uh, that's a month per email.
Yeah.
So thirty-one committees is like forty-five hundred dollars a year, which isn't a lot of money, but.
We already.
There's a lot more emails than that because you're talking about the whole city's emails, not just these new committees.
Yep.
Yep. Karen, did you? I'm sorry.
We already have a quote that brings it to a little bit under twelve, so we know we can get it.
Good.
Awesome.
This is all good news.
Great.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah. Um, is there anything else on this topic or should we move on?
I'm okay. Uh, you want me to write up some language for a motion for the next meeting?
I'm fine. Yeah, that's, that's great if you don't mind. All right. Um, I know Counselor Zaret's gonna have to jump off in a minute, so, uh, Karen, thank you so much. You, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks so much. Bye. Um, I, 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 my understanding is that, uh, Counselor Coniff and Counselor Zaret had a chance to, um, connect and we have a, a five-C proposal that everyone's happy with?
Well, the two of us are happy with it.
Well. The two of you are happy with it.
I don't know if that constitutes everybody, but.
I think if the two of you are both happy with it, then.
Okay, so here's, here's where we, let me see if I can find it here. Uh, this is what we agreed to, which is largely, uh, what Counselor, uh, Rist and I, uh, agreed to. So, um, let's see. Oh, I have the wrong one up. Sorry.
Do you wanna share your screen, sir?
No, it's, it was a text message to Owen. Um, okay, so what I have is, um, any, so this is like at the end of the normal five-C. Any such member me- measure must be introduced verbally by way of a motion to refer to committee and shall include a synopsis of the new business to be introduced. And no motion to refer to a committee shall be accepted without such introduction. No debate may occur on the merits of the item being introduced.
I love it.
Succinctly sum up what we've been discussing over the last couple of meetings, so I'm pretty happy. Counselor Zaret, do you feel like y- y- you're on board with this?
I just wanna clarify if, if, uh, within the language, I couldn't tell if, um, President Coniff said a motion or emotion.
Uh.
That was a.
Depending upon what the motion is, you could have emotion. So either way, it works.
I am very happy with this. I am very thankful to, uh, President Coniff for spending the, the hour so that we talked about this. And, um, it's a great example of, uh, the collaboration among counselors and, uh, introducing an idea and then working on it together. So I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Well, I have nothing else, so I, I'd be willing to entertain a motion unless anyone.
I move that we accept, uh, the new amendment to Rule Five C as presented by Counselor Coniff.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Rist?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
So, Peg, you can just have that in the packet for the next meeting, uh, next council, yeah?
Yes, I will.
Thanks, everyone. I gotta jump off. I appreciate it.
Bye, Owen.
Thanks, Owen. Bye.
We should have a, a rule that they have no texting and driving. I think committee meetings and driving should be illegal.
No Zooming and driving.
Not Mr. Gah. Oh, sorry.
Not the first one. I, I was in a meeting with, with, uh, another counselor, Owen, I hope, the other day that they were just like, hey, I, I'm here, but I'm driving. So their, their phones in their cup holder or something.
Well, it is, it's, yeah, okay. At least Billy Lynch always pulled over into a parking lot when he did it.
Yeah.
What else can we talk about? I think those are the only two things, right?
Those were the two big things I wanted to cover, and it sounds like we're in a good place. We'll move on the other one next time. We can make a motion on, on that item, uh, the next meeting, so, yeah, I feel pretty good. Um, unless there's something else that you guys wanna discuss, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, do you wanna set another meeting? Cuz we have two weeks before council meeting.
Oh, you're right. Um.
I can't, next week is April second, am I right?
Yeah.
Next to.
Well, next Friday.
Next Thursday is April first?
Yes.
Yeah.
We could do that or we could do the eighth. But I don't know.
Um.
If we wanna do a Thursday, that is.
Sure. Well, let me check what I have going on on the first.
That'd be very brief, cuz this is all we'd be doing, right?
Uh, yeah. It doesn't look like there's any other meetings that any of us would be in that night.
Okay.
I have a suggestion. What if we did it right before the council meeting? I, cuz I'm sending you the language. You don't wanna do it. Peg wants to have her head in place for the council.
I'm not gonna get my head.
I knew that was a bad idea the minute I saw.
Yeah, gotta get in the zone.
Do you listen to, like, music and pump yourself up?
Yeah, I listen to, uh, Bellower. Have you heard of it?
No, this guy sucks. Bunch of posers. Um, so, uh. Okay, cool. Well, then let's do the first. I've got nothing going on, so we could, um, do, um, yeah, there, I see there is a, oh, weird, there's an appointments thing at three thirty P M.
They, they meet during the day now.
Okay.
Is that the, uh, the interviews?
Nope, 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 nope. It is their normal meeting time.
Interesting. Okay, well, whatever. I, uh, all right, do we, like, do five P M on, uh, on Thursday, the first?
Sure.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Okay, I'll send that to Barb right now before I forget.
Now, it is April Fool's Day, so let's not have another fake Zoom meeting like we had last.
Okay, yeah, no, I, won't happen again.
Okay, five o'clock.
Okay.
We're on the same page.
Did we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Rist?
Aye.
I vote aye.
All right, guys.
Thank you, guys. I gotta go cook dinner.
See you later.
Take care. Bye.